The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Aldenberg. Alderman Com.
Present.
Alderman Orion. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Velazquez.
Present.
Alderwoman Sanier. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browney. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Present.
Alderman Aldenberg. Alderwoman Sanier. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Tyus. Eleven, present, you have quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. A quorum being present, we will be led in opening reflection by Yolanda Wood and Lieutenant Colonel Henderson Smith III, retired Air Force.
Thank you very much for this honor to do this reflection. When a survey is done, you have to ask two questions. Who's being asked and what is the environment? In 1925, members of a war college class did a survey. They reflected on the performance of African Americans in World War I. And based on their survey, they concluded that African American men did not have the capability, the skill set, the leadership qualities to fly or fix airplanes. And for 20 years, that was the law of the land. At the beginning of World War II, they said, wait a minute. And they said, well, you can't find a location to train. And the Tuskegee Airmen said, watch me. And they said, well, you can't find instructors to train you. And they said, watch me. And they said, you can't find college educated African Americans that can pass the test and become pilots. And they said, watch me. And eventually Tuskegee, Alabama became one of the training sites. And Eleanor Roosevelt went down there one day and she got into an airplane with Chief Anderson and they said, ma'am, you can't fly with that black man. And she said, watch me. Eventually, they were sent to North Africa and to Italy. And eventually, they became, by request, the bomber escorts. All through their lives, they faced challenges. And their response was, watch me, followed by action. Ladies and gentlemen, you have the opportunity to continue the legacy of the Tuskegee Airmen. When you're faced with a challenge, I want you to do two things. I want you to think, watch me, and then follow it up with action. Because your actions can change our future.
Good morning, Aldermen's, family, and friends of the Tuskegee Airmen. It is my honor to stand before you today to take another important step in preserving the legacy of the Tuskegee Airmen. With Bill 109, we seek to present or give the street in front of the Soldier Memorial the honorary name of Tuskegee Airmen Way. A lasting tribute to the 50 Tuskegee Airmen who proudly called St. Louis their home before, during, and after World War II. The Tuskegee Airmen were more than just pilots. They were mechanics, doctors, nurses, clerks, cooks, and many more professions. They were pioneers who broke barriers, shattered stereotypes, and paved the way for generations of American aviation aviators like myself and many other military personnel. Despite facing racism and discrimination, they demonstrated unwavering commitment to service, courage, and ecstasy. Naming the street Tuskegee Airmen Way is a way to honor not only their remarkable achievements, but also their resiliency. The street will stand as a reminder of all who passed by the Tuskegee Airmen, passed Tuskegee Airmen vital contributions to our nation's military history and the ongoing fight for equality. By passing this bill, we are cementing a permanent place in our city's history for the courageous individuals. Let this be one of the many steps that we continue to tell the story and inspire future generations of St. Louis. I thank you very much.
For any of the Alders that would like to take a photo this morning with the guest speakers, please make your way up to the dais. Thank you again. Madam Clerk, please dispense with line item four, introduction of honored guests. Introduction of honored guests. Alderman from the 11th.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, for today, and honored guests here, and my brethren who are in attendance today. My honored guest this morning is the pastor and members of what I call a working church. And so up in the gallery, we have a few of their members. So ladies and gentlemen, if you will, direct your attention to the gallery. We have Deacon Leon Lambert, Chairman of Bethlehem Deacon Board, Viola Lee, who is the Finance Chairwoman, Deacon Tremaine, Deacon Walter Bugs Senior, Deacon Walter Bugs Junior, Deacon Josh Sister Dantrice, and let's see, who else we have? We have Sister Lee, Deacon Tommy Davis, who is the Church Committee Man, and Pastor Darrell Lee of Bethlehem NBC Church located at 3506 Cass Avenue. So anybody who knows me knows that I love a working church. And throughout the 11th ward, we have many, many churches that are filling the needs of community. They do ministry, but they also do social work in providing wraparound services in the community to members and to people who just live in the area. And so Bethlehem is that kind of church. And I'm so honored this morning that some of their members were able to be here with us. So to them, I say, may God continue to bless you and bless the work of your heart, hands, and minds, and continue in good service and fellowship to His glorious name. Amen.
Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President and members of the board. I wanted to have as my honored guest today, my parents, Michael and Margaret Green. Both of them have had some health challenges this week. My dad had surgery. My mom unfortunately tested positive for COVID and hasn't been able to help with his recovery. So I wanted to give a shout out to them. I'm in New York doing some caregiver duties for a little bit. But both of them are feeling better than they were a few days ago. And I'm just wanting to give them a shout out and also thank members of the board and my staff who have been supportive and stepping in this past week when I had to unexpectedly get out of town. So thank you. And Mom and Dad, this is the first board meeting I'm taking from your kitchen.
We wish them a good recovery. Alderman from the 14th.
Thank you, Mr. President, Vice President, looking really good up there on the dais, fairy godmother. First, I would ask my colleagues also to send love and prayers to our president, Mom and Dad, who's getting over COVID and also recovering from a surgery that sounds like it went well. Also, I would like to introduce the Tuskegee Airmen Chapter that is here. But as well with them is the legendary, we have a legend amongst us on the floor, Mama Jamala Rogers. If you haven't read her pieces in the St. Louis American or just seen the work that she's done, I don't know how you could have missed it. But she's just a legend in the city. She's been so helpful with passing legislation, especially around civilian oversight and continuing to make sure that we hold the system accountable. So it's an honor to have her here. It's an honor to look up to you and have been able to work with you. And thank you all for being here today.
Alderman from the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest something that I never thought I would be doing, and that is a public utility, Ameren U.E. We had an emergency in our community with a senior building. And they had run into some financial problems. And there was a threat to shut their utility off. And I want to say from the CEO's office on down that they worked with us, they extended the time to pay, they shortened some of the obligation, and they did a fabulous job within 24 hours of me learning of the problem. They had it well underhand. I don't want to shout out a specific person who does it because that's my go-to person over there. But I just want to thank Ameren because they did really a good job and showed that public utilities can be caring corporations. And they were good stewards in our community. And so I want Ameren U.E. to be my special guest today. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the first.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, members of the board. Today, I would like to have the workers at the polls as my honored guests, especially Ben Borgmeyer, who's been just doing an amazing job keeping everybody updated on vote times. Remember to vote today, tomorrow, Monday, and definitely by the end of the day on Tuesday. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the approval of the meeting minutes from Friday, October 25th.
I looked up and shook my head. I thought she was acknowledging me for introduction to honor guests. I'm like, no, I'm not up here today. No, I was teasing you. You always normally have some. Thank you, Mr. Vice President and members of the board. I move that we adopt, sorry, approve the minutes from Friday, October 25th, 2024.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderperson from the 14th, that we approve of the meeting minutes from Friday, October 25th, 2024. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C if the agenda has been placed in the Google Drive for your review. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for reappointment to the Grove Community Improvement District. The reappointment of William Essner, the reappointment of Guy Slay, the reappointment of Kelly Spencer, and the reappointment of Kimberly Smith Drake. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment sincerely to Sharra O. Jones-Bear.
Alderman from the 9th, you are recognized on Mayor Jones's appointments to the Grove Community Improvement.
Thank you. I would move that we accept the mayor's appointments of William Essner, Guy Slay, Kelly Spencer, and Kimberly Smith Drake.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 9th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 10th, that we approve Mayor Jones's appointments to the Grove Community Improvement District. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, I'm sorry, that's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Aldenberg. Alderman Com, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Com, Vice President Com.
Aye.
Alderman Orion. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Velazquez.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanier.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browney. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Fifteen aye votes.
By your vote, you have sustained the motion from the Alderman from the 9th to approve Mayor Jones's appointments to the Grove Community Improvement District. Petitions and communications.
We have none.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please dispense with line item eight. Does anyone want to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Alderman from the 9th.
Yes, I would move that we take Board Bill 74 off of the third reading informal calendar and place it on the third reading consent calendar.
Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill 74 on the third reading consent calendar.
So noted.
Board bills for perfection, informal calendar. First reading of board bills.
24 sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen and Apportionment, reappropriating certain amounts of funds received under the American Rescue Plan Act 2021, specified herein and thereby superseding all other previous ordinance appropriating such funds to the extent such previous ordinance conflict with this ordinance appropriated certain amounts specified herein in an estimated aggregate amount of $165,792,148.07. Board Bill 125, introduced by Alderwoman Switzer and President Green. An ordinance requiring property owners to prevent and remediate mold in rental dwelling units prohibiting an owner of rental dwelling units from obtaining a certificate of inspection if mold is present, providing for notice protocols to owners of units where mold is found, requiring owners to notify tenants of units where mold is found, directing the Department of Health to create materials with information about mold prevention, remediation, and hazards, empowering, building a vision to enforce this ordinance, imposing penalties for violation of this ordinance, providing for an effective date containing an emergency clause and a severability clause. Board Bill 126 sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard and President Green. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen and Apportionment, amending ordinance number 713, I'm sorry, 71393, ordinance number 71494, ordinance number 71554, ordinance number 71591, ordinance number 71841, ordinance number 71864, by reappropriating certain amounts specified herein in an aggregated amount of $8,488,215.07 for purposes with an emergency clause. That's the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the HUD's Committee, Board Bill 124, 125, and 126. That's the extent of reference of Committee of Board Bills.
Second reading and report of standing committees.
The following board bills were reported out of HUD with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill 59 sponsored by Alderwoman Keys, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller of the city of St. Louis to execute upon receipt of and in consideration of the sum amount of $10 and other good and valuable consideration. A quick claim deed to remind release and forever quick claim unto Bethlehem Missionary Baptist Church, certain city-owned property located in City Block 1883, which property is known in number as 33509 Cousins Avenue in the city of St. Louis, Missouri, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 114, as amended, sponsored by Alderwoman Sanier, President Green, and Alderman Aldridge. An ordinance amending parts of Chapter 26 by adding new definitions of special residential uses, amending certain uses of special residential uses, regulating special residence uses and site requirements containing a severability and an emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of Public Infrastructure Utilities Committee with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill 87 sponsored by Alderman Aldridge, an ordinance to install stop signs within various stops, I'm sorry, various locations within the 14th ward. Board Bill 121 sponsored by Alderman Browney, an ordinance pertaining to parking within the Forest Park Southeast Parking District, which established the location and restriction for curb parking, the restricted parking zone in the district created by this ordinance, authorizing the placement of permit parking only signs within the district and prohibiting the parking within the district of any vehicle which does not obtain the authorized permit containing definitions and a penalty clause. Board Bill 123 sponsored by Alderman Aldridge, an ordinance establishing a four-way stop sign at the intersection of Locust and 22nd Street, regulating all traffic containing an emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of Public Safety with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill 110, commis sub-sponsored by Alderman Aldridge, an ordinance to repeal certain sections of Chapter 15 and Section 11.20 of Chapter 11 of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis, addressing acts of public decency, offenses against public peace, and other miscellaneous offenses in order to eliminate outdated, unconstitutional, or conflicting provisions that are inconsistent with state statutes. Board Bill 111 sponsored by Alderman Valmer, Alderman Orion, Alderman Aldridge, Alderman Aldenberg, Alderwoman Velazquez, Alderwoman Sanier, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, and Alderwoman Keys. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen and Apportionment, authorizing the Fire Commissioner on behalf of the city of St. Louis to enter into a 2023 Fire Prevention and Safety Grant Agreement within the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and accept grant funds appropriating said funds and a required city match for said funds, authorizing the Fire Commissioner to expand the appropriated funds by entering to contracts or otherwise for grant purposes containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of second reading, report of standing committees.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Report of special committees.
We have none.
Please dispense with line item 15, board bills for perfection consent. Alderwoman from the 12th, you are recognized.
Yes, Mr. Vice President, please remove Board Bill 115 for the perfection consent calendar.
Madam Clerk, please remove Board Bill 115 from the perfection consent calendar.
So noted.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the board bill. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Board Bill 86 sponsored by Alderwoman, I'm sorry, Alderman Aldridge and Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated January 23rd, 2024, for the 1105 Olive Street area in the city of St. Louis. Board Bill 116, as amended, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance directing the director of streets to install speed humps to ordinance number 70333, as amended by ordinance number 71394, to calm the floor traffic on the 5906 blocks of Horton Place and the 5100 block of Kate's Avenue. Board Bill 117 sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer pursuant to ordinance number 70333, as amended by ordinance number 71394, an ordinance directing the director of streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on various blocks in the 1st ward. That's the extent of board bills for perfection consent calendar.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the board bills for the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Vice, I got to get that right today. Thank you, Mr. Vice President, members of the committee, I move that we adopt the board bills for a perfection consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we adopt the board bills for perfection consent calendar. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Board of bills for perfection.
Board Bill 115 sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, Alderwoman Sanier, and Alderman Aldridge. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen and Apportionment, authorizing the mayor to submit the city of St. Louis 2025 through 2029 Consolidated Plan and the 2025 Annual Action Plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development containing a severability clause and an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 10th, you are recognized on Board Bill 115.
115. Thank you so much, Mr. Vice President, members of the board. Board Bill 115, I was so excited and proud to carry in a hearing on October 22nd. The meeting did go a little long. It was about four and a half hours, but it was worth it because we took the time down here. We did our job in committee to make sure that we got the full presentation for this consolidated grant, 25, 2025 to 2029 consolidated grant, and this annual CDBG funding that goes into place. This year is the 50th anniversary of the CDBG funding program. That's, you know, something to celebrate, the dollars that have been used.
Would you like to make a motion to perfect?
In my motion to perfect, I get excited about this again because there's so much history in this, right? And so again, being able to be on the board at a time like this, this is also the 10th year when the changes were made down here at the Board of Alderman. I wasn't here 10 years. So I love doing the history and learning the history of it. But 10 years ago, the change was made to take that responsibility from the Board of Alderman and put it into CDA. That has the capability and is a very professional group. They make these selections, and then we get to see them come to fruition. We get to advocate and champion for these transformational dollars on the ground in our, this way. And so again, I want to be for clarity, make sure that the public watching does know that this consolidated plan that they're going to be submitting is in a public process where they are taking public comment at this time. And it's not over till November 13th. So I encourage us to move to.
Would you like to make a motion to perfect?
I did, but nobody seconded. Thank you, Alderwoman Keys for seconding.
I think you kind of continued in the conversation, so. It's been moved by the.
Can you tell how excited I am about this opportunity?
Seconded by the Alderwoman from the 11th. Be perfect, Board Bill 115. Alderwoman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So again, just for those clarity, and I'll be free to answer questions from some of my colleagues, but I just want to make sure that people understand that this process, one, we as Alders do not make the selection, we are not part of the selection process. This goes through CDA. The consolidated plan that is also offered for submittal in this board bill is in the public comment process. So you still have time. If you're watching this, you can get off this meeting today and go on and make comments, your public comments, and then we can share with our constituents as well to be involved in this process. But again, these are the transformational dollars that go on the ground in our community that we do every year, that we pass, and that we again get to watch come to fruition across the entire city of St. Louis. So with that, again, I will be open to answer questions from some of my colleagues. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, members of the boards. I don't have a question, I have a statement. I rise in opposition not of most of this bill, but to the part that funds Covenant House. Covenant House has been the bane of our existence since they were installed in our community, moved from what used to be the 7th Ward, and I believe now is still the 7th Ward because there were problems there and the habit of former mayor of moving problematic shelters and homeless centers into North St. Louis. That was a thing that was really interesting is that although some of us came from different backgrounds in the Black Caucus when we used to have 28, almost nine of the 12 Black Aldermen wrote a letter to the mayor about the problems that had occurred in North St. Louis with the former mayors pushing everything into North St. Louis and all homeless shelters and problematic shelters. If it's already a problem in one place, it doesn't get better because you move it to someplace else. Covenant House has upward of 90 complaints. Recently, they started back up again. I got pictures of them trespassing. I watched them set up stuff on fire. I talked to the young people the other day when I caught them, took pictures of them behind people's houses and trespassing and smoking, doing drugs and other things. And when I talked to them, I said, "Do you all not know you're not supposed to be doing this?" "Yes, we know," and you're talking really nice to us because most of the people say, "Get away from my house." And so I want to say that if you don't ask the right questions, then you won't get the right answers. So we've watched this explosion of ARPA funds and what's wrong with when you do ARPA funds right the wrong way. And I was on record when we changed it that it was going to be a problem. And I'm saying now, the reason why they are funding Covenant Houses because they're not talking to the seniors that live around it, that've been there for 50 and 40 years, that've been harassed and have crime committed around their properties. And so when you keep bringing people into communities committing crimes, but you close down and gentrify Reverend Larry Rice's place downtown because those people can't be bothered with the homeless and the crime. And we even have to put bicycle racks around downtown City Hall and the park. And we have the park that's right down the street from Reverend Rice's former place that was open that you can't be there during the day because they clean the park, which is not true at all. That was put there to keep the homeless from being there, but you put the homeless in my community where they commit crimes and then you fund them. And so whoever's making that decision, when I finish, I will be calling the Director of CDA and saying, "Come and talk to these people" because none of those complaints were made by me. This were the people up and down the community that are being harassed. And it was some of the people who formerly said we were going to support this thing. And now call me all the time. I got phone calls right now saying, "Hey, the Covenant House people are doing this. They're doing that." You should not be funding people who don't pay their taxes. You should not be funding people who don't have proper business licenses. You should not be funding people who don't really exist. And you should not be funding people who are nuisances in the community. And this is a nuisance in my community. And so that's why I'm opposing it because they should not be getting funded. And I brought other people in there, independent people. I brought the state senator, I brought the state rep, who both left saying, "Oh, this is a mess, a hot mess." And then the very Board of Directors who came that we met with said they wouldn't want this by their house. But somehow it gets stuck here and then people want to know, "Why doesn't she want it?" But you come and live by it. Come and hear the loud noise, the cursing, the all the thing that goes on, and you won't want to be around that either. We had a quiet neighborhood. There are two things in our neighborhood that are a nuisance, that is Covenant House and that is that Salama's gas station. Both of them forced down our throats and put down our throats by conditional use hearings and by Board of Adjustments. And our community told them what would happen and they didn't listen. And all the things we said and more are happening. And so I am only opposed to that funding, and that is that Covenant House funding, not the rest of it. And that's why I rose to oppose it because I will be talking to the people who did the funding. I want to ask them, did they find out? Did they ask how many complaints have been made about this place? And I can show them that it's going on from almost the day that it opened when they were breaking in our garages. So I want all the people who, people are telling you, "Oh, you just don't understand" that if you destroy the very core of a neighborhood by saying that the homeless have more rights than the people that have been there, you're sending more people out of the city of St. Louis. People will leave. They will not stay here. We are, when I got here, we were like at 400,000. We had 200 and something thousand. We've been doing it wrong. We're not protecting homeowners. We're not saying that homeless don't have a right to live. But you don't have the right to live next door and move something into my community that has been a nuisance for the whole time that it's been there. It is wrong. And you can run all the ads you want to about the kids, but you also have immature people working there. When you call them and say, "Hey, we can hear the loud music halfway down the street." They say, "Okay," and then you have to call the police on them because they won't make the kids be quiet. And they won't make them turn the music down. This used to be a Catholic school that my husband attended, and it was closed after 3 o'clock or 4 o'clock when the kids left, and there was nobody. Now we have to live with 24-hour harassment in our community, and it should not be funded. And whoever funding it, they obviously don't live there, and I will continue to be opposed to that. And for that reason, I am voting against this board bill. And I don't think it was a great thing to take away the input from the Aldermen because you're not listening to any- to me, you can just go check the nuisances that's been reported. I had one the other day. It doesn't make any sense. That is not helping our community. It is not helping the people who live here when we have that kind of nonsense. And the people who said, "But they gotta live someplace," I say, "I agree, but that's not the place. It's not proper zoning. It was a school. They closed down the school. It was not meant for people to be there all night making noise. That is not proper zoning, and it should not be rezoned so it can be." We had a great place that we had for homeless children. It was called, it is now the North Side Community Center, but it used to be, oh God, I can't remember the name of it now, but it was a big plot of land in the 3000 block of Kings Highway, Echo Children's Home. And it had a, actually a campus is what you need. When you have young people, especially young men, you need a campus where they can be outside, where they can make noise and not be up against housing. They had a school. They had a gymnasium. It was a great place, and I worked with them. We expanded it while I was the 20th Ward Alderman. And we didn't have that. But when you put in cram kids into a school and try to make as much money as you can and you put it right up against people's houses and they have no place to go and you're bringing people into all times of night and stuff, then you have the problems created from bad planning and bad placement. And that is what's going on with Covenant House, and I'm not the only person that knows it. Senator May knows it. Former State Representative Chris Carter knows it. We went in there. We tried to talk to them, and they just want to stay there, and they don't care that they have destroyed the neighborhood around them. They have burned down buildings. It is a nuisance and it has no business being funded. And for that reason, I am opposed to this board. Thank you.
Any further discussion on Board Bill 15 for perfection? Alderwoman from the 8th.
Thank you, Madam Pres-, oh, thank you, Mr. Acting President, members of the board. I did have a question for the Alderwoman from the 10th. If she just has a, I know she was just walking right out. But I think it's really helpful, the history that you mentioned earlier, Alderwoman, about HUD and the previous involvement of the previous-
Alderwoman from the 10th, would you yield to-
Boards of Aldermen, and now that you're back, I would like to ask you to yield for a question.
Yeah.
Woman from the 10th, would you yield to questions from Alderwoman from the 8th?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President and members of the board, and thank you, Alderwoman Spencer. I can try to yield for questions. Again, I was not here. That was 10 years ago. I'm going off what I have heard and what was reported to us and what was presented to us in HUD. So I'm not sure what your question is. I definitely won't answer any specific questions about any specific alders or anything that was said may have may not have happened. I don't know anything about this, so I won't speak on it. What I will say is that one thing I agree with Alderwoman Taya said. I don't, I don't always say, "Take us out of the process" because we are closest to, we are, I'm gonna let you answer your question, but I want to make sure I have this caveat. We are closest, and this has been done down here before. It was just done a couple of weeks ago. We have, we are closest to the problems. So we should be closest to the solutions. Go ahead with your question, Alderwoman.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Your email earlier was very helpful in reminding me that when HUD stepped in 10 years ago, or a little before that, I think it was, and strongly, I think, required that the Board of Aldermen didn't have any direct involvement in the disbursement of these funds. That was a point that was reiterated in your email that, you know, the Board of Aldermen, our role here is to approve the recommended funding by CDA. And this board doesn't have any direct involvement in which entities are funded. Is that correct? I think that's the way I understand this process. But I just, for the general public, I think it's helpful to know, we are approving a list of awards. And, but we don't, as a Board of Aldermen or legislators, have direct involvement in choosing which grants or which awardees are going to be funded. We don't have a oversight role as far as which ones are chosen. And if we were to be involved, it's my understanding that this could be problematic and could, you know, really result in favoritism and other things that the federal government had pointed out may or may not have happened or certainly were worried about. So I just more or less wanted to reiterate what you were describing in email correspondence, I believe, yesterday, reminding this board and the general public, really, that while we do have the role and responsibility of approving the list, we have, if you could describe the role of the Board of Aldermen in choosing the grant renters, it would be helpful just to remind us all kind of what our role is.
Thank you for sharing your understanding, Alderwoman Spencer. And in my email yesterday, I reiterated that we are not at the table when these are chosen. You know that way. I think you might have been here 10 years ago when they made the change.
I was not.
Okay, really? It seems like you've been here.
So I didn't participate really before that, but yes, I do remember that big shift.
Okay, yeah, so that's it. And this was a ruling that was made by none of the people I would think down here at the board. It was made by HUD. And so in that transition, this is now the process that's been going forth down here. You can run the clips for the past 10 years, and there's never been any changes or pushback on that. Pushback that required a change, rather. One, because it was noted that that might draw a flag for HUD, for why they did this change in the first place, again, 10 years ago prior to me being here. So I'm being educated on this process. This is the second year now as I proudly and humbly serve as Chairwoman of HUD, which is why I was asked to carry this legislation. But again, this legislation, when you look for legislation in a city that'll give you hope, this should be one of them because it funds programming, it funds departments, it funds transportation across the entire city of St. Louis. And again, I'm not sure what direction you want to go in on the specifics of what our role is, but right now, our role today, I know our role is to show up. I know our role is to advocate for our constituents. I know our role is to be in committee and ask the tough questions that we may have while the directors are there. I know our role is then to get down here and answer any tough questions we may have between our colleagues. And so again, thank you for sharing your perspective.
So I guess I wanted to just recognize the Alderwoman from the 11th.
12.
12, excuse me. I really, we've gone through so many numbers down there. My apologies, Alderwoman. Just, you know, I mean, bringing up concerns about a specific grant award winner. But, you know, we in our position here in the legislative body wanted to make some clarity on whether our role is to vet those specifically. I also honor and recognize, you know, specific concerns about specific award grant winners. But just to communicate to the public and the rest of the board kind of where we have authority, what our role is, and if we can and should be specifically vetting individual awards. It's my understanding that, again, to your email, that participating in that could, would result in red flags. Our role is not to vet those specific grant award winners or to make specific decisions on a specific awards, but rather just to authorize the pass through, and we're not part of that decision-making process on who is receiving funding. It was more looking for clarification in a very, very general sense, but recognizing especially because concerns were raised about a specific award winner.
Thank you so much, Alderwoman Spencer. Thank you for reiterating the exciting comments I made in my opening when I was aggressively moving to perfect this bill. I did mean that then. Yes, I did reach out to my colleagues like I always do when I'm passing legislation and see if they have any questions, especially whether it be on perfection consent or on regular perfection. So that's what I did. Thank you for your clarification.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Alderwoman from the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, members of the board. So I was here when they changed the rules. And it was an advisory. It was not a mandate. What happens when people do advisories is they try to villainize the alderpeople down here. "All those crooks down there, look what they have done." Vetting does not have to mean that you make the final decision, but part of the vetting process could be, "Do you know anything about these people? Is there something that we missed?" It's something that when I was a practicing attorney, sometimes we ask that question. I'll ask you this, something that I should have asked you. That helps the process along. I don't believe most of the alderpeople who have served on this board are crooks or dishonest people. So I don't like when I hear that as a reason for that we shouldn't put our nose in it. We shouldn't say anything. We are the closest to it. So if you have additional information, it helps you make good decisions. And as we've seen, bureaucrats do not make good decisions at LRA because of the thing that happened before with the former Alderman. If the bureaucrats and the commissioners were doing their job, the Alderman, no matter what they said, we couldn't do a dagum thing about it. So I've always, I know that because my husband used to be the Chair of LRA. So they don't have to follow the Alderman's recommendations. The same thing with SLDC and the same thing with CDA. What they use that for is a way to not have the Alderman involved at all. Involved does not mean making the decision. It means I have some additional information and I asked that question when we were changing the ARPA funds bill. I said it then, "How will we know what would happen?" I'm on record of saying this is going to be a problem. As long as people keep villainizing the members of the Board of Aldermen for being down here and asking questions and wanting to have information or to put additional information into the pot so that you make the decisions, you're going to have bureaucrats making bad decisions and then covering up, not wanting to discuss what happened, not wanting to give additional information, and not finding out until that, what happened with the ARPA funds. Because I, to see, I want to give a shout out to the McBride person who voted present because if that were me, I'd have been voting no on this. You don't give me information, you don't get my vote. And we need to all be more mindful of that. And so it was not a mandate. It said it could raise red flags. They took that and ran with it. I was there from 1991 to 2012, I'm sorry, to 2003, and we did it a different way, and there were no mandates. There always are going to be hiccups and things that are done wrong. That doesn't make one bad apple or something that happened make the whole crate rotten. So I'm tired of being vilified for other people's mistakes and for the entire Board of Aldermen saying, "Well, you can't do this." It was not a mandate. It was a suggestion and said it could, not it would, raise red flags. And if your only fault then is that somebody says, "So this is what we're talking about, sponsoring or funding in your award, but do you have any additional information?" That doesn't raise a red flag because once you give them the additional information, then they can check if it's true or not. You should be able to give them something that's verifiable. And most times it is true, and you can have it checked. So again, I'm not vilifying the entire board bill. I'm saying that they made a mistake with this one and that they ought to check. If you're going to check, because when I first came here, nobody checked about if people paid their taxes, if people were current with their business license and things. That came along with some of the newer alderpeople. And I agreed with them from the very beginning that I heard it. It was a good change. So don't then say, "We don't want to have additional information" because we should always want additional information so we can hold people accountable so that we can make good decisions. So be it an Alderman putting something in, I want to say this specifically to the Alderwoman from the 8th, you having an opinion about something does not raise a red flag. You saying that this is a problem, you maybe need to look at this, does not raise a red flag. So I don't think that's the way it was supposed to be taken. I think that was a way for the bureaucrats in the mayor's office to snatch it away so that Alderman wouldn't have any input, and I think that's a mistake. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 7th.
Thank you, sir, for sharing. I just wanted to, first of all, commend Alderwoman Shamene Clark Hubbard. Previous to the HUD's Committee, she did send an email out to all of the HUD's Committee members letting us know that this presentation was coming, opening up the door for any of us who wanted to have conversation, letting us know that there would be a very detailed presentation. presentation from CDA so that we would have a chance to have a very thorough presentation and be aware of what we were voting for. And I also wanted to thank CDA and specifically Mr. Pfeiffer, who came to the HUDs Committee and talked for about two and a half hours, I believe, I might be a little wrong, and really went into detail on the funding of every project, where it's going to, the history, and explained it very well. So I just wanted to commend the Alderwoman, who also sent an additional email to us as well, even after it got out of HUDs, to all of us on the board, letting us know that this will be coming before us and, you know, making sure she avail herself to answer any questions. So I just wanted to thank the Alderwoman and thank CDA for the in-depth presentation and say how much I really appreciated the opportunity to learn a lot more in depth about these programs and the funding and where it comes from. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of, I'm sorry, Mr. Vice President, members of the board. When you come before somebody and make decisions, then there's, then you're not trying to get any input. Nobody's saying anything about it wasn't a good presentation, just not trying to have additional information because you don't want to, because you want to do it a certain way. So again, great for you, Mr. Director of CDA, great for you for all the emails that went back and forth, but you still didn't get enough information. Again, if we at the Board of Aldermen don't learn anything about what's going on with the ARPA funds, that we haven't learned anything, if we're just all putting our heads in the ground and saying, we don't want to know, that's what's wrong with this board. Not that we have too much information or that we put it in, is that we want to not acknowledge that it can be done better unless it comes from something we say. If it's something we say, oh, the taxes should be paid, you tell me that, I hadn't had that be part of the process before, but you're absolutely right. I put a piece of my legislation on the informal calendar and told the people, hey, one of the new people said, but what about the taxes that I didn't know? But that was all right if I knew it or not, because that was a great question. If we're only going to wait and say, oh, this just happened in that committee, we wouldn't even have perfection. Perfectionist for also to bring things up. But if your argument is going to be, well, it has to be in committee, that's just not true. And that's just not true that Alderman can't put in ideas that need to be considered. So you keep trying to stroke people. I remember when the whole committee that had Public Safety did not read the bill about the excise changing the liquor board, the liquor licenses for restaurants. The only person who read it was me. And everybody got up and said, oh, we did all the work in committee. No, you didn't. You didn't do the work, because the first line in the bill was wrong, and the bill had 52, 60 mistakes in it. So if we don't read these things, and we got legislative assistants that don't read this legislation, and if we say we don't want to hear it, it didn't come in committee, then we're part of the problem. So there's nothing wrong with bringing things up now, is nothing wrong with saying, Neil Pfeiffer, I'm sorry, not Neil Pfeiffer, Noel Pfeiffer, that it's a process that you forgot to ask a question. Is this a nuisance? Do we want to be funding nuisances? And it's a valid question. And so I'm going to continue to press that button, and I'm going to continue to oppose it. And I want a roll call, because I want to make it clear that I don't want to fund nuisances in other places, and I don't want nuisances funded in my community either. Thank you. Roll call.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 14th.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. I think, you know, it's just clear, so the excise bill went through red tape, not Public Safety Committee. But on top of that, I just wanted to make sure, am I added as a co-sponsor on this? Thank you.
Any further discussion? Madam Clark, can you please make sure I'm added as a co-sponsor as well?
So noted.
Alderman from the 10th, I'm sorry, Alderwoman from, yes, the 10th, sorry, you are recognized to close on perfection of Board Bill 115.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, members of the board. I did just want to reiterate in some of the comments that I made earlier, the reason why I always am so passionate about the committee part of the process is because that's when the constituents and the public, our neighbors, our elders are able to speak in committee, not just to hear each other speak, but to be able to make changes, not before clarity in this bill, because this bill is made, the selections that are made in this bill are made in CDA, not at the Board of Aldermen, not in the HUDs hearings, not in perfection. So the reason, again, I wanted to share that is because everybody knows how I love to make sure that the public is involved transparent and that they are given the facts on how processes, how systems work, not that we're created by us ourselves, but that we have to either find our workaround or to complain about. And so I want to make sure that, you know, that the part of this bill that has the 2025 Action Plan and funding recommendations that will be submitted is in the public comment process as we speak, as we speak. And this was a 30-day public comment period, and so it's still going on, and you can continue to offer comments up until November 14th, that's two weeks from now. And you can go, either go in person, hybrid or in person, to give your comments at 1520 Market Street. And there'll also be some other submission dates and opportunities that you can find on CDA's website. With that, I renew my motion to perfect Board Bill 115.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we, or I'm sorry, the 11th, that we perfect Board Bill 115. Madam Clerk, there's been a request for a roll call. Will you please call the roll?
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Aldenberg. Vice President Kohn.
Aye.
Alderman Orion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Velazquez.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sonier.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
No.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldridge.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Boyd. 12 aye votes and one no vote.
With that vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman from the 10th to perfect Board Bill Number 115. Report of engrossments.
Board Bill 83, 89, 90, 91, 92 as amended, 95, 108, 109, and Board Bill 74.
Third reading and final passage of Board Bill's consent.
Board Bill 83, 89, 90, 91, 92 as amended, 95, 108, 109, and Board Bill 74.
Alderman from the 14th, you're recognized on the, which board bill? Oh, right, okay. Alderwoman from the 10th, you're recognized on the motion to adopt the third reading and final passage of Board Bills on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the third reading and final passage of Board Bills on the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we adopt the third reading and final passage of Board Bills on the consent calendar. Any discussion? Alderman from the 14th.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President and members of the board. Just a couple bills I want to highlight and thank my colleagues for being part of. So Board Bill 91, that is on the consent calendar, which we recognize Freedom Way at Market and 11th Street, was a combination of legislation with also Board Bill 92 that I was able to work with Judge Mason on and so many others to bring in honorary street naming of Freedom Way. If you haven't had the opportunity to go outside of the Civil Courts Building in the back, Judge Mason and so many others worked tirelessly to bring a monument out there. And now to be able to call that intersection Freedom Way, I think is just going to be super exciting on top of working with all my colleagues. Thank you all for Board Bill 92 as amended, for embanking that bill to make the Civil Courts Building name honorary Clyde Cahill, which we talked about that last week, as well as Board Bill 109, Tuskegee Airmen. I don't think I can follow up behind Ms. Yolanda outside of saying, watch us install that honorary street name to be able to make sure the history of the Tuskegee Airmen in the St. Louis and the gratitude and the stuff that they did to make our country great and to remind people that just because you are of color, you are just as amazing and can do amazing things. So thank you all for being here, and again, watch me.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, will you please add me as a co-sponsor on Board Bills 91 and 109? Oh, they're already perfected, never mind. Is there any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Aldenberg. Alderman Kohn.
Aye.
Alderman Orion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Velazquez.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sonier.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldridge. President Green. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Boyd. 14 aye votes.
By your vote, you have sustained the motion from the Alderwoman from the 10th and have third read and finally passed the aforementioned Board Bill. Third reading and final passage of Board Bill.
We have none.
Please dispense with line item 18B, report and finally, of the finally passed and signed by the President.
Board Bill 83, 89, 90, 91, 92 as amended, 95, 108, 109, and Board Bill 74.
All other business being suspended, the President shall an open session affix his First reading of resolutions and reference to committee.
We have none.
Second reading of resolutions, committee reports and adoptions.
We have none.
Please dispense with line item 21. Alderwoman from the 8th, you're recognized on the motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Courtesy Resolutions 168 and 169.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we suspend the rules for the purpose of introducing Resolutions 168 and 169.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 8th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 10th, that we suspend the rules to introduce Courtesy Resolutions Number 168 and 169. This is a non-debatable motion to suspend the rules. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Aldenberg. Alderman Kohn.
Aye.
Alderman Orion. Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Velazquez.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sonier. Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd. 14 aye votes.
By your vote, you have sustained the motion from the Alderwoman from, Madam Clerk, please place Resolutions 168 and 169 at the end of the Courtesy Resolution Calendar.
So noted.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you're recognized on the motion to adopt the Courtesy Resolution Consent Calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the Courtesy Resolution Consent Calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th and seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th, that we adopt the Courtesy Resolution Consent Calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Please dispense with line item 23. Announcements.
Thursday, November 7, 2024, full board meeting in the chambers at 10:00 a.m. That's extended the announcements.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would like to just take a personal moment and recognize that today is Trans Day of Remembrance. It started back in 1999 as a way to honor those in the trans community that have faced violence or have died as a result of being trans, and would like to take a moment of silence for those in the trans community that we've lost to violence. Thank you. Any further announcements? Alderman from the 14th.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman and members of the board. Anytime I get a moment to take away an announcement from the Alderman from the 5th, I will. So I was ear hustling, it sounds like next Thursday is Pitcher Day, so I took his shine, so he can just go ahead and sit on down. Ms. Billups is the one who reminded him, because he forgot to make it happen. So next Thursday is Pitcher Day, everyone get glammed up, talk to Ms. Billups, so you can get the information. On top of that, next Tuesday is Election Day, so please make sure you get out if you can and do your civic duty and vote, everyone at home, if you are able to vote early, please do so. I also want to give a huge thank you to Ben Berkmeier, I hope I said his last name right, and also St. Louis County Election Board, as they've been able to work together to really get the word out about getting out and voting early, making sure locations are set up, and making sure they have to ensure that voters are able to vote early. So get out and vote, and thank you so much.
Alderwoman from the 10th. Alderwoman from the 10th, no, Alderwoman from the 11th.
Oh, from 11th, oh, okay, that's me.
Well, I thought the Alderwoman from the 10th was at the mic, but Alderwoman from the 11th.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So I just want to, again, remind people about voting and how vital it is, but I really want to ask for a moment of silence for our country, for everything that we are wanting for this country, and also remind you that November is the month of National Caregivers' Month, so it's kind of appropriate that we talk about that and that our president is home being a caregiver. So remember, our caregivers all across the country, I've been a caregiver for my mom and both my in-laws, and it's no small task as you help them towards their transition. And so we definitely want to give them, you know, that little bit of attention this day. But the, let's get to the moment of silence for our country first, and I got something else to say.
Thank you. Well, you all raised for a moment of silence. Will you all raise for a moment of silence for reflection upon our country?
Also, as we do that, November is the month for the true forgotten man and forgotten woman in this country. This is Native American Month here in our country. And no one has been as forgotten as the people who were already here, and those are Native Americans. Many of us share Native American ancestry. And for that, we need to remember that this is their country. We are here. It is our country as well. But it is shameful the way that we acquired this country and the way that we have pushed aside and completely forgotten about Native Americans in this country. And so I'd like to honor them today. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the twelfth.
Well, I was gonna announce about Native American Day, but they let me beat me. That's okay. But I also want to just remind people that we're falling back on Sunday. I wish we could find a time and pick daylight savings time and keep it or do something. I hate the changing of the guards. It gets us all mixed up. So remember on Sunday, we're going to fall back an hour. Also, I want to say that we are having a wonderful town hall meeting tomorrow from ten a.m. to one p.m. with many of the black elected officials who represent North St. Louis. They have a great amount of topics. It's gonna be at the United House of Prayer Church, thirty-three hundred Kings Highway, which is the former twentieth, first, and now the current twelfth. And one of the things we're gonna be talking about, I'm glad that somebody talked about constituents being able to speak. We're gonna be talking about the fact that we are a representative form of government, because I often get complaints from my constituents about why we're having all these surveys and why we're doing all these studies, and that's what we elect you for. So they're not pleased with all of the things that other people might think. And the other thing I wanted to say, we're gonna talk, have a takeaway, is from when I talked about the committee not reading the bill, that the takeaway was you named the wrong committee instead of we didn't read the bill, because that's the real takeaway. And we're talking about, we will have conversations about what is the role of an elected official and a legislator and what we're supposed to do, and the cost of having fourteen versus having twenty-eight wards and how it's really hurting North St. Louis will be part of our topics. And I invite people to come out and have a say if you want to come. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the sixth.
Thank you, President Kohn, or Vice President Kohn. Just wanted to just add on to the Election Day stuff. A special shout out to our Board of Elections. They've done an amazing job. And one thing that they've been asking us to do is to just let voters know, right? If they can vote early, as our colleagues have said, but also that the city has a real-time wait time app. So for folks to use it and to encourage our constituents to care so they can see what the wait times are at all the polling places for both early voting and on Election Day.
Thank you. Alderwoman from the seventh.
Thank you. Tomorrow, I just want to make sure I remind folks that we do have Cherokee Jazz Crawl. It is a big event every weekend. It will be live, it will be safe, and there will also be a dance battleground competition. Doors open for six for that at the Golden Record, and yours truly will be a judge, so bring the mood. And then I also wanted to announce that also happening tomorrow is a winter outreach training. It's getting cold. A lot of emergency shelter conversations are happening. We know that there's a struggle every winter with finding enough beds. And so there will be a training tomorrow that will be held at the Americorps St. Louis Center. And it will go from ten to, from, it begins at eleven. It will go from eleven to two. You don't have to be there for the whole time, but they just want to make sure you're prepared, that you understand how to interact with unhoused members, so that you understand how to administer Narcan if you can, so that you can get an idea of, you know, how will you find out what beds may or may not be available on which day. So just wanted to make sure that I shared those events because I know there are many folks in our city who are gearing up to volunteer. And so I wanted to make sure folks knew that that training opportunity was available.
Alderwoman from the tenth.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, members of the board. I have a few, and then, you know, I always go live after the meeting with all my real announcements. But I want to make sure that I put our record on November the twelfth, HUDs meeting will be having hearing for Board Bill one twenty-six. I also want to echo all of the comments about the importance of Election Day, early voting. You can take advantage of it today. When you, if you're really watching us now, you can, when the meeting adjourns, you can go vote. You can go vote tomorrow. You can vote Monday. But by all means, please make sure that you have your vote cast five, seven p.m. on Tuesday. And also to piggyback off of Alderwoman from the twelfth's announcement about daylight savings time, if you ever paid attention to on my desk, this exhibit I hold, this exhibit I hold near and dear to me, this is a burnt-up smoke detector from the control burn that I did with the fire department, our beloved St. Louis Fire Department. And it reminds me that at daylight savings time, it is time also to change your smoke detectors and CO detectors. So I have a quick message from them. As daylight savings time begins this weekend, the St. Louis Fire Department wants to remind everyone to check their smoke and carbon monoxide alarm. Remember to change their batteries and take a moment to practice your family's emergency exit plan. Additionally, the St. Louis Fire Department, in partnership with the American Red Cross, will be in neighborhoods throughout the city installing free smoke alarms this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, as a part of the Sound the Alarm campaign. If residents, if you're listening, constituents, neighbors need free smoke alarms, please contact the St. Louis Fire Department at three one four five three 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 four zero six. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you for the timely reminder, Alderwoman, and to the fire department for all of their efforts with our citizens and certainly their efforts with the smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors is a wonderful benefit for often taken care of or recognized. So thank you for that as well. Any further announcements? Seeing none, motion to excuse alderpersons. Alderwoman from the tenth, you're recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, members of the board. All members were present this morning.
Wonderful. Adjournment. Alderwoman from the tenth, you're recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, members of the board. I move that we adjourn until Thursday, November seventh, twenty twenty-four, in the Board of Aldermen's chamber.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the seventh, that we adjourn until Thursday, Thursday, November seventh, in the Board of Aldermen's chambers. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? We stand adjourned.